All right, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the, yes? Oh, okay, yeah, that's all right. All right, now I'll call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of June 24th, 2015. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room, and a copy of the full agenda, including staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, it's open today and no parking coupons are necessary. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellphone usage is not permitted in the chambers during any portion of this meeting, and we appreciate your cooperation with that. The Planning Commission action today is items on, action today is final on items 1.2 and 4.1B. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action in the Planning Commission to the City Council by filing a notice of appeal with the city clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held June 10th, 2015, and I believe there was an amendment proposed to the minutes, is that correct, Jerry?
That is correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Move approval?
Second.
Call the vote? Beecham? Abstain?
Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yep.
Shear?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero with one abstention. And I would like to make an announcement, and I apologize, I, if one of the staff from Planning Department could go up and get some coupons, because I believe that the gate is, um, thank you, I appreciate it. So you do need to get a coupon if you parked in that north lot.
Sorry about that. Um, the next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request for, from someone wishing to speak or at a request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all of the items on the consent agenda into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under section three of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, the first item, item 1.1, text amendment number 15008, is being removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing as item 3.1 at the request of Commissioner Shear. So I will read that under, uh, public hearing. The remaining item on the consent agenda is item 1.2, special permit number 1020H for authority to amend, special permit number 1020G for a non-residential healthcare facility by adding 2.4 acres of property to the special permit, making it part of Brienne Medical Center West. The additional property would be used for parking and green space. The expansion is proposed on property generally located at 2145 South 17th Street, and this is final action by the Planning Commission. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this remaining consent agenda item?
I see none.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this consent agenda item? If so, please stand and state your name.
All right, seeing no one, we will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Beecham?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. This is final action on special permit 1020H unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days.
All right, at this time, I would ask Jerry to call the items on today's agenda for which there has been a written request for deferral.
Okay. The applicant for the following two items has submitted a written request for an additional two-week deferral delaying public hearing before the Planning Commission until July 8th. First item is item 4.1A, change of zone number 15015, a change of zone from AG Agriculture District to R3 Residential District, and item 4.1B, special permit 1502A, a request for a community unit plan to allow for the development of a 34-lot subdivision with waivers, setbacks, lot with lot area and private roadway design standards on property generally located at 5,000 South 48th Street.
All right, we'll entertain a motion on the request for deferral.
Move approval?
Second.
Call the vote?
Beecham?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried for deferral till July 8th.
All right, was there anyone here who wished to testify on that item today rather than waiting until July 8th? All right, seeing no one, we will proceed with the rest of the items on the agenda, and we will now proceed to the public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or testi, her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying needs to state their name and address, and will have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you have one minute to wrap up your testimony. There's a lot of people here waiting to testify, so we're going to be pretty strict on the timer today. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first public hearing item.
Okay, item 3.1, text amendment number 15008, whereas the City of Lincoln has previously adopted resolution number A-85012, amending the City of Lincoln design standards to add chapter 3.100, design standards for outdoor lighting, providing design standards for the installation of outdoor luminaries, and whereas the planning director has proposed amendments to sections 3, 4.1, and 9.8 of the design standards for the outdoor lighting by amending section 3 to revise the definition of cutoff and full cutoff, amending section 4.1 to add a new subsection C to provide the maximum average maintained luminance of outdoor li, areas under blighted marquees, or lighted marquees, excuse me, and amending subsection 9.8 to add a new subsection 2 to provide acceptable glare measurements for setback properties in repealing sections 3, 4.1, and 9.8 as hitherto existing. Staff recommendation on this item is for approval.
All right, are there, are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this item?
There were, I had a couple emails that Tom and Steve and David Carey and I exchanged about this item as it pertained to a building permitting issue.
Tom?
Tom Chayka, Planning Staff. This text amendment is to amend chapter 3.100 of the design standards for outdoor lighting. The outdoor lighting was amended and approved back in 2008 after an extensive two-year study that really looked at the entirety of outdoor lighting for different items and different situations, and that, that was adopted in 2008. Over the last six and a half years, that has worked very well. We have had a few tweaks that we wanted to make to the standards that we realized needed to be made after we went back and looked, looked over some things. One of the issues was that after we adopted the standards in 2008, either right after or shortly before they were adopted, the, um, a new classification system was brought in by the Illuminating Engineering Society of North America. This new rating system is referred to as BUG, B-U-G, which stands for backlight, uplight, and glare. We did not have this classification system in our standards, so one of the things we wanted to look at was to add this and have a, have a comparison where what we have today is referred to as cutoff or full cutoff for, for light fixtures, and we had to come up with a, something comparable in this BUG rating that would equal what we have considered cutoff and full cutoff. We weren't adding any, really any new or changing the system we have, making it more tougher on developers or trying to change the amount of light that's emitted, it was just a different classification system that my understanding is that most of the lighting engineers use today. The second issue we looked at was we have a, in the current code, there's a measurement of when you measure light trespass, it's measured at the lot line, and it has to be below a certain rating. We found that on buildings that have zero setback, this was pretty much impossible to meet, so we've done several waivers over the last six years, mainly they were either for buildings in the downtown area, West Hay Market, like some of the new hotels and buildings down there. Couple other ones were in commercial centers where a lot of times in commercial centers, the lot line and the pad side are one and the same, and typically surrounded by an outlot for either open space or parking. So after our, um, I mentioned, I forgot to mention to say, we did work with a consultant, a lighting engineer from Olson Associates, Ken Fairchild, he's here today to answer any more technical questions. So after working with our consultant, it was, it came up after running through some models and doing some different things, that if you have a zero lot line, we would measure 10 feet off the lot line, and this would only apply where the lot line meets either a street or the lot line meets a outlot, that's not for, uh, building. The third thing we looked at that wasn't in our current code and has came up a few times was lighting under marquees or canopies that extend from a building out over a ride, a public right-of-way such as a sidewalk. One of the waivers I did, I don't know, a couple of years ago was that they, if you're familiar with the Terminal Building at 10th and O Street, they had changed their lighting on their canopy, and it didn't meet our code, so they had to do a waiver to get that approved. So, so it's kind of, um, two issues here, bring the stand, bring the standard up to current standards, address some of these issues to, to, um, kind of get away from having the applicant or the developer have to go through a waiver process. Any questions?
Tom, just for the record, the, the Planning Commission previously had a briefing
Yes.
On this.
True.
Any further questions? All right. We will, um, move to testimony from the applicant, I, which I assume is you, and, um, testimony in support of the application. All right, seeing no one, do we have any testimony in opposition to the application?
Hello, my name is Jennifer Klein, K-L-E-I-N, and my address is 8025 Hannah Point Place here in Lincoln. I am a licensed professional electrical engineer with the Clark Anderson Partners here in Lincoln, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on item 1.1, text amendment 15008. The timing on this is a bit concerning to us. We were not made aware of the changes, the upcoming changes, until last week, and we haven't had an opportunity to really vet, um, the information and the proposed changes and how that affects our clients, our future and our current designs, our clients' budgets and needs, and most importantly, uh, the public safety, obviously. We appreciate the planning and the department, uh, Planning Department and the commission's desire to keep the ordinance flexible with the current, or with the, the changing lighting technologies, it's very important that we have something that's breathable, and we absolutely support the desire of our community to minimize the impact of lighting on our skies by regulating the uplight component of the fixtures that we specify, that's that U-rating and the BUG rating that we've been talking about. We are concerned, though, that this one-size-fits-all on the backlighting and the glare, um, proposed, in the proposed amendment, um, i, is a bit concerning, that the one-size-fits-all may not be, um, appropriate. Section nine in the ordinance actually still requires, uh, lighting designers to produce calculations showing that the glare and the backlight on the property line has been minimized. So does this one-size-fit-all, does that, that help us in an entire property? Uh, maybe that's not appropriate for what's happening in the middle of the property. We just really haven't had time to vet that and to understand if that really impacts our clients or our designs as they are today, so. Secondly, the proposed change to the lighting standard that addresses light trespass, that section nine that I just spoke about, um, in the past, we've had some confusion on where that property line is for our, our calculations. In the 9.8.1 section talks about the adjacent property. When we've had situations where our properties have been separated by a road, um, the adjacent property line obviously is across the street, and we've been told that that's not the adjacent property line, we need to use the property line that's on the property that we're designing. So there's been a little bit of confusion with that, and so this amendment starts to, um, kind of help the situation when we talk about the zero setback, um, but it doesn't necessarily, there's a little bit of ambiguity in that when you talk about the 10-foot line. One would assume that the 10-foot line is beyond the property line, but given our previous confusion with the, where the property line is, um, that ambiguity in the, in the language is, is not, uh, clear, obviously. Is the 10-foot line beyond or is it inside? So we're left to make an assumption there. And it also doesn't address the situation that I spoke about earlier, where we've got in a property line that's across the street, where we don't have that zero setback, so. So, um, I would really, um, I'm really here today to ask the commission to consider delaying decision on item 1.1 until the design community has an opportunity to vet the proposed changes, and perhaps there's an opportunity for the design community to hear from the lighting consultant in the planning department in more of a, a Q and A, um, open dialogue situation, so we can learn more about how these proposed changes developed, some of the calculations that they used to get to their reasoning, um, and really just ask some questions and see how that pertains to us and to our clients' needs, so. Appreciate the opportunity to speak, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have questions? All right. Um, Tom, rebuttal? I guess I should ask, is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition? Yes? Okay.
Good afternoon, I'm Eric Johnson, I work for Lighting Specialists out of Omaha, which is a manufacturer's representative organization. I live in Lancaster County in the Village of Panama. I would reinforce some of what Jennifer had to say, that we became aware of this last week, and as we are looking at how does this affect design, we have questions and would love to have that opportunity to have some more Q and A. There's some other areas in the code that I, uh, I don't know how it would affect the sports lighting standard, for instance, if I recall, allows us to go up to 72 degrees, I want to say, but in the BUG rating, if I have fixtures up at that level, I'm gonna have a terrible time doing sports lighting, so I just have a lot of questions of how, from a practical standpoint, this standard, what it's going to do, because is it going to require us in parking lots to use lower power fixtures and more of them, increasing the cost? The old standard in cutoff allowed a percentage of light in a zone, so that as we went into more and more powerful fixtures at higher and higher heights, there was, there was, because that zone became bigger and bigger, it allowed more and more there. In the BUG rating, the glare is an absolute number, and so on a low lumen output fixture, that's not hard to meet, but if we go up into a higher power fixture, we have a problem, and so I, some discussion there would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, questions?
Sir, could I get your address, please, your mailing address?
600 Locust in Panama.
Thank you.
All right, so we have other testimony in opposition? All right, now Tom. Tom, is there a reason we couldn't defer this for another two weeks to do a little more public outreach?
I'd prefer not to, actually. This, I think there's two different issues here. This was not a, intended to be a re, um, study of the lighting code, it was only to tweak a few things, it wasn't to go back and look into what our rating system is, what's determined when you have to have full cutoff or, or, or cutoff, or, or what's the maximum lumens allowed for a light fixture. This was only to put in this new classification system, which is, and if we get technical, I'm gonna have Ken come up here, but my understanding was that the BUG rating we came up with is equal to what they're required now to have under a cutoff fixture or a full cutoff fixture. So my simple knowledge of this is that we're not really changing what, what's required today. And, I mean, the other thing on the, uh, light trespass, yeah, the adjacent property line is always meant, well, really your property line, whether it's next to a street or another property, it's, it's adjacent. So that was actually, the new language to put in there was to make it easier on developers that are building on a zero lot line, but there was no intention to change what the standards are today for, for lighting.
Kathy?
Tom, it, in our notes, it says there was a 2014 working group that was formed to address, was anybody from the development community on that working group, do you have any idea?
No, it, it was just a small working group, it was Terry Cathy with Building and Safety, myself, Marvin Kraut, and then David Carey, and our consultant. I did, however, we did send out our proposal to lighting engineers, I sent it out to Sentry Electric, Advanced Engineering Systems, Design Associates of Lincoln, and Davis Design, and we had no...
And that was a couple of weeks ago?
No opposition to it.
Or 10 days ago, or whatever?
Uh, that was more than 10 days ago, that was probably at least a month or more ago, we sent it out to them, so that they would have changes in...
Dennis?
This might be a question for Ken, I don't know, but is it possible that the, the BUG rating system does have, or will have unintended consequences on some of the other things that you don't think are affected but could be? Is that an issue here? That's probably a Ken question, yeah.
Please go for it, Ken.
My name is Ken Fairchild, I live at 6218 South 31st here in Lincoln. I think the way I'd like to explain it to you, Dennis, is how we went about, Marvin's charge to us was very clear, it can't be worse, it can't be more lenient, it has to be as bloody close to equal as you can get it. So at the time we did this, uh, we took five different fixtures, uh, most of whom, maybe all of them, were used in the A-market area. Uh, one of them was a metal halide, which is a classic HID fixture, uh, the others were all LEDs, I believe. And we had Photometric Toolbox, which is a software that we used at that time that was still looking at, it would give you answers to the old classification system and the new classification system. So we ran those on those five fixtures, and we produced documents that are in the report that show fixtures that, that, in all of the classification, I think we had non-cutoff, I think we had cutoff, we had full cutoff, so we tried to, to do the gamut of them. And we looked at what the BUG rating was on those, and we tried very hard to pick ones that everyone has lived under the old classification system without the concerns, uh, and so we wanted to be able to live under the classification system as it stands now. I am not a SEER, so I can't tell you if it's going to have any implications before, but the system has been in place now for seven years, the BUG system. The complication for the design standards here in Lincoln is that we had the old classification system for basically lighting that was for parking lot lighting and roadway lighting, and one of the fixtures that we did was the LES Preferred LED fixture that was used for roadway lighting down, uh, in the Hay Market. So, uh, you know, we did our level best to get this thing, um, the concerns about that Eric, uh, preference to sports lighting, um, sports lighting is a completely different category of lighting, this cutoff and full cutoff does not apply to, uh, that, so I, I'm kind of missing the point there, uh, but I can tell you that we looked very hard at this thing, and we looked at five fixtures, and, and the, the reason we didn't just randomly pick fixtures out of catalogs is we wanted some that had been in Lincoln, they were installed in Lincoln, so we were looking at fixtures that, uh, in one way or another got approved for use, and so we came up with the recommendations that we have in there, and we did get one comment back from those people that, uh, planning and, and, uh, review picked to, you know, be our sounding board for it, uh, and it did have an impact on, uh, the uplight, uh, that was, that was referenced on that, so, um, I hope that answers your question, that's the best one I can do.
It sort of does, it does good, well enough.
Any other questions?
Tom, how often are standards like this reviewed? When, when would be the next time? Is there a periodic timeframe for that, or is it just... I think it's just hit and miss, I, um, we haven't really, I mean, this came about, like I said, for two reasons, the BUG rating, and we wanted to, um, try to lessen the need for waivers. So, on any design standard, I think if it's working fine and there isn't complaints and people aren't complaining about it, we probably wouldn't go back and look at it again unless the, unless we felt there was some issue that needed to be reviewed, and up until just a few days ago, I hadn't really heard over the last six and a half years that there had been a problem or complaints about the design standards.
And the building committee, community would still be able to ask for waivers and such, that has not changed at all?
Yes, that has not changed.
And Tom, as, I understand it, the, there's basically just three changes in the text amendment, and that's the first one defining what the BUG standard is, the second one defining, putting standards on lighted marquees, and then the last one defining what you do in a zero setback property. There's nothing else in the lighting standards that are changing?
Correct.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. We'll proceed to a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion.
I'll, I'll start. I, I would like to see a, a bit of a delay. I, whenever we deal with design standards, and we've all been on subcommittees where we have dealt with design standards, there's a pretty comprehensive kind of, um, process where a, a pretty large sample group gets to have a chance to look and, um, evaluate the design standards and, and, uh, comment, and it, it seems to me that this sample is pretty small. The, the folks that Tom mentioned that this was... to me that this sample is pretty small. The, the folks that Tom mentioned that this was evaluated by is, is a pretty small group compared to all of the lighting designers, manufacturers, and people involved with lighting design in Lincoln. And I, I do think that it, it's sort of been a surprise to some of those folks. The, the ex parte communications I had was, I think, involved with maybe getting, or having this issue come to the front with some, some folks, because it was about a waiver, and it was the waiver, the, the whole waiver process and, and the standards were not known. It hadn't been passed, number one, but when it, when a project was going through Building and Safety, this came up, and it was a surprise. So, that indicates to me that it wouldn't be a terrible thing for people who are professionals in this area to have a little more time, or have time to, to view this, but that's where I stand on it. I, I don't, I don't think that the intent of the design standards are, are wrong at all. I'm not against that at all. It's just that I think that it'd be nice to have a little bit more time for people to look at it.
Other comments?
I'm gonna support the motion. I think that it seems like there's just a few minor changes in, in this proposal, and personally, I think we just need to move on. I'd challenge Clark Anderson that if they feel that there need to be changes, then they should work with the Planning Commission and, or Planning Staff and, and come up with those changes.
I'm gonna agree with Chris on that. I think we see text amendments like this on a very frequent basis where we're trying to make them a little easier on the development community. I, I would say if, if there are surprises out there, then I would not be opposed at all to us looking at a bigger, comprehensive review of our lighting. But if we do that, then I think we need to include the larger community, lighting consultants, neighborhood representatives, astronomical community, the same folks that looked at it back in 2008. So, I agree with Chris. I'm gonna support this text amendment going forward now.
Yeah, and, and I am gonna agree with Chris and Kathy. I, I think this wasn't meant to be a change to the design standards as much as a cleanup and changing to the engineering standards that are actually in use. And I, you know, we're not the last authority on this recommendation for the text amendment. It is, does have to go before the City Council, before it's finally approved, so there'll be a little more time for review, and if there are concerns, they can be presented at that time. So let's call the vote.
Each one?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Barrett? Shear?
No.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one. Okay, the next items on the agenda, items 4.1A and 4.1B are deferred at the request of the applicant for public hearing on July 8th. The next two items are items 4.2A, change of zone number 15014 from R1 residential to R2 residential on property generally located at the southwest, or southwest of the intersection of Old Cheney Road and Norman Road. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Item 4.2B is special permit number 15035 to allow the construction of a residential healthcare facility for up to 285 residents, and to allow waivers to the subdivision ordinance and subdivision ordinance to adjust the height requirement and eliminate block length and pedestrian easement requirements on property generally located on the west portion of the Knowles Country Club, Norman Road, and Old Cheney Road. Staff recommendation for special permit is conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these applications?
Yes, I have one. Trev Peterson is my law partner, and he did discuss the application with me. I encouraged him to put his opposition in writing and send it on, and he did send an email in opposition. Chris?
I live fairly close to this neighborhood, and I have some friends in this neighborhood, specifically Michael Johnson and Barbara Keating talked to me. I told them about the process that we go through here. Both have submitted letters that express their opinion on this, and everything that was discussed with me is, are contained in those letters.
I got just a couple of phone calls asking the best way to contact Planning Department and referred folks to the email, saying that everything that was sent would be sent to all of us.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Christie?
Good afternoon, Kristy Icorn, Planning Staff. What I'd like to do is take these first five minutes and briefly cover the history of the Knowles development, the community unit plan, and the golf course as we know it. Talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan, talk about the recommendation that was in the staff report, and briefly touch on the main points of opposition. The applicant will come up after my first five minutes and talk more specifically about some proposed amendments to the plan, some discussions that they've been having with the neighbors since the last neighborhood meeting, which I attended. There were two neighborhood meetings prior to the application, and I did attend both of those meetings, but I have not attended any of the neighborhood communications and meetings after the application was made. So let's take a step back to 1955, when the Knowles first came in as a development. It came in as one of the first community unit plans in Lincoln, not the first, but a very early community unit plan. And the site plan that was approved with it was very general. It showed the lots, and it showed an area for a private park. In the early 1960s, that community unit plan was amended to change the private park to a chip and putt golf course. We went back through the records, and we could not figure out how did this golf course get approved without a special permit or some other documentation other than the community unit plan, which didn't specifically delineate where the golf course would be. And that was because prior to 1979, golf courses were allowed in residential zoning districts. It wasn't until after 1979 that they were considered a recreational facility and one would need to get a special permit for that use. So, in the comprehensive plan, it talks about golf courses, and it talks about green space and open space. And when you look at the land use map, you'll see that the Knowles Golf Course is colored green on that land use map. So when development comes in on private property, we, we look at that to give us guidance. And although it's colored green on page 12.4 of the comprehensive plan, it talks about how in some cases, privately-owned green space, such as golf courses, may also be appropriate to be considered for future urban residential development. So we use that phrase as kind of the core in our decision-making process when we're gonna support or not support a different type of development. The golf course, because it's private property, we know that it's going to be sold, and it's gonna be some other use than what it is today. So although it could be used for future urban residential development, it's currently zoned R1 today, which is single or two-family residential uses, also single-family attached residential uses. In the R1 zoning district, there's generally setbacks of 20 foot for a rear yard setback, and 10 foot for a side yard setback. The applicant came in and said, "We'd like to do a residential healthcare facility on this property." And what we took into consideration was going to be the setbacks of the structure, where it would be located on the property, and the impact it would have generally on, on that particular piece of property and the neighbors as, as they are surrounded, on two sides by single-family residential lots. The applicant showed us a plan, which took the structure and moved it closer to Norman Road and away from the residential units. The, the site plan that we saw, and I believe it's the original site plan that was shown to the neighbors, showed a minimum setback on one side of 81 feet and a maximum setback for the taller buildings of 113 feet. In the R1 zoning district, if it was single-family residential, you would have a 20-foot setback. In general, when we are asked to approve an increase in height of a building, we think about the setbacks, and how we can mitigate the impact of the increase in height by using a common denominator, a common equation for all developments and not necessarily one in particular. So generally, we talk about a rule of, if you're gonna go up a foot, you should step back at least a foot. And the requirements, that requirement specifically was shown on the site plan for the taller building being set back 113 feet from the residential property line. Those were the things that went into the consideration of Planning Department staff as we were writing the recommendation as laid out in the staff report. So it had to do with the building being moved closer to the street, and it had to do with needing a revised landscape plan that was more specific, that we were going to require some additional landscaping, which would meet the same as if it were a multifamily building or an apartment building, which would not normally be required with a residential healthcare facility, and that they were keeping the taller buildings closer to Old Cheney Road and further away from the single-family residential units. Residential healthcare facilities are a special permitted use. They are not a use by right. And so, we thought that it would be appropriate to bring that to the Planning Commission with these ideas of how we could mitigate the impact of that use on the site, and, and have that discussion here. We did receive some letters in opposition, and those letters were forwarded to. Some of the main points of opposition were opposition to the change of zone, and the reason the applicant was asking for the change of zone was to get the density that they feel is needed in order to make this a productive development for them on the number of acres that they have. There was also opposition to the height, because generally, the surrounding buildings are single-family residential, and they have a maximum height of 35 feet. And so, this would be a 20-foot increase over the, the height that's approved in the residential zoning district. There's also opposition to the building design. There are not building design standards today in this residential area. There are covenants, but it is my understanding that the covenants do not apply to the golf course itself, but apply to the residential lots that surround the golf course. Also, covenants are not the city's purview, and so if a person who owns a property is not consistent with the covenants, that does not go through a city process. That is a civil, private process that they go through. There is also some opposition because there is a desire to keep this as green space. Although it is private property, there were no city departments that indicated to Planning Department or Planning Department staff during the review of this special permit that they wanted to, or had the ability to purchase the property for private park space, or for pri, or for public park space, or public green space anytime in the, in the near future. And so, those also went into consideration. So I think at this time, unless you have specific questions for me about the staff report or the existing regulations, I'd like to have the applicant come up and talk about the proposed changes and their communications with the neighborhood, and move forward from there, and then I can come back up and answer additional questions.
I have one quick one.
She has a quick question.
Can you just describe the topography of Norman Road and then the neighborhood? Is it going downhill towards the neighborhood? Is it flat? Is it going uphill towards the neighborhood? Do you know?
There is some slope, but Mark Palmer with the applicant, he's here, and he can probably describe it even better than I can.
Okay. All right. Applicant?
Okay, my name is Pat Day. I'm 1427 South 184th Circle in Omaha. And I'm with Dial Retirement Communities out of Omaha, and we own and manage retirement communities throughout Iowa and Omaha and Kansas City. And we've been looking at the Lincoln area for many, many years, and found this site, the Knowles property, several years ago, and, and approached the, the owners of the property, and, and we're very excited about it, because it's an infill location with many quality neighborhoods around it. And so for us, we, our, our goal is to try to do about 190 units between independent living, assisted living, and memory care. And the way we broke it out is where we'd have 20 units of memory care, 60 units of assisted living, and then the balance would be independent living, totaling 190 units. And the assisted living would be two stories. Our clubhouse, which we call the common area, which is where the dining room and theaters and swimming pool and so on and so forth, would be one story. And then our independent living would be three stories. Ken, you wanna go forward on...
Yep, you bet. Thank you.
You may go ahead.
I'm here helping Dial Real Estate Consultant LLC. Mark Palmer with Olson Associates is here, and Eric Westman, architect with Alley Boy, Alley...
Alley Pointer.
Pointer. I was close. Is here on any questions you have on those type of design issues. First of all, we met with the full neighborhood twice before we submitted, and we had really good attendance. That's, and lots of heated discussion and concerns to say, to put it mildly. And those were on March 26th and May 11th. We then, after we submitted, we also then continued the dialogue with the steering committee. The neighborhood got a smaller group together to help guide the neighborhood interests with Mark Hanzaker, and we appreciated that very much. We then had three different meetings with smaller group, and we showed them a series of site plans. So, when we started with the first neighborhood group, through the two full neighborhood groups, and then through the steering committee, what we're showing you today is the sixth version of the site plan, and it has shrunk and created more buffer for the neighbors along the way. We got very close on the site plan in our last meeting on Monday. I don't, they can report. I don't think we got consensus, but we got really, really close. And so, that's the site plan that my motion to amend, that I think you have, has been, well, be talking about. I do wanna confuse you a little bit, because I do have a modified motion to amend. It's the same one with a new condition regarding stormwater. In yellow, so you don't have to read all of this. You can just concentrate on the yellow part. Basically, the site plan, revised site plan we're submitting as a substitution today, we did it on Monday. We didn't have time to do stormwater analysis, so we're not showing stormwater detention facilities. So this new note is basically saying, "We will do the stormwater detention analysis study for Public Works to their satisfaction." And then we'll show the site, the stormwater enhancements and improvements necessary to the satisfaction of the Public Works Director along the way. But I, what the real motion is doing is, we're voluntarily doing this. As you know, Planning Department has recommended approval of our original plan and our original waivers, but Dial has impressed me totally by their willingness to go the extra mile and meet and talk and make it right from the, as best we can from the neighbor's point of view. So, we originally applied for 285 persons. Now, healthcare residential facilities talk about persons. Most of the time, we talk dwelling units. So I can, I got a conversion table if you need one, but basically, 285 persons, which was about 210 units, if that helps you in any way. What we're now showing you is a voluntary reduction of down to, from 285 persons down to 258 persons, or that's about, from 210 units down to about 190 units. So, about a 10% reduction along that way. We've also reduced the height. We had, part of our building was four stories. We have voluntarily agreed to reduce it, and that's where the units are coming off. And so, we're down to three stories at the highest point. Again, as Pat mentioned, this, the memory care assisted is two stories. What you and I would call the common areas is one. The independent over here is three stories. This used to be four stories, and we've dropped it down to three. What's a little bit hard to understand, and Mark might help you with elevation, is this three-story L is one story below this three stories. So it's really stepping down as you approach Old Cheney Road. They're both three stories, but the, the topography is, is going away at the same time. We also agreed, you know, we're not gonna put any maintenance buildings in the back and those type of things, so that you see what you see in the ways of our major buildings are being shown here. And we also want to formally ask for a substitution of the site plan. It creates bigger buffers that Christie had mentioned, you know, considerably bigger buffers. 85 are, are going further down and over 100 feet long now, a distance from the homes. And we also are committed to do a landscape plan. The neighbors, through our process, we all agreed the site plan was the most important, because once you know the site plan, then you can figure out where to put the trees. because once you know the site plan, then you can figure out where to put the trees. And we also then, when we know the shape of the building and the height, we then know how to skin the building or do the elevation. So, what we've agreed to do is we're going to have four more meetings that we've put on people's calendars. We're inviting the Planning Department this time, if that's, and they're so inclined to come, and work on what I call the landscaping and be sure the drainage is working. What we're really doing, if you, the real key here is there's three holes here on the edge, and we're pushing the building totally out of those holes. So, you have the main set of trees up against the neighbors. You have the open green fairway, and then you have the other set of trees. So, those are staying. The drainage will, as Mark can explain, will go down the fairway so that we don't flood any neighbors along the way. And finally, we've added a note as far as posting bond that if we don't have that landscape screen in by the time we occupy, then we'll bond to guarantee that it will go in because that's a commitment we've made to the neighbors. And since their covenants is, which we don't have to comply with, say, at least sixty percent brick, we are now saying we will also. So, during the next four weeks, we will hit the trees, we will hit the skin, we'll be able to show them a better design than the ones apparently we've shown them to date that they haven't fallen in love with yet. So, we're committed to work extra hard, just like we've been committed to redo the site plan so many different times. And with that, Pat and I would, and our team would be glad to answer any questions.
Kent, I know you're still working on this again. Do you, do you have any ideas of what the exterior is going to look like yet?
Really pretty.
Got any pictures you can show me?
Well, I mean, we can show you old pictures, but that's the issue is I don't know if that's worth showing you because I think the neighbors have a stronger desire for a certain look. You know, most of the homes that we come up against are brick. So, I think brick, we've heard that word many, 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 many times. But I mean, as far as the palette of the colors, that's the type of stuff where we've been, according to our process, we've got two weeks to show them a revised elevation and revised materials, hard materials. And so, that's my best view. This will be a higher-end retirement community. So, having a poor look is not in our interest nor the neighbors. So, that's, I think, why we're very optimistic we're going to reach consensus because we've come a long ways with them, and I think they understand that it's in all our mutual interest to hit the skin very accurately.
I have a question.
Ben?
This, Kent, this goes more to the nature of the four additional meetings that you're going to have. I mean, how they'll be constructed and conducted. The one thing that, I don't want to say it concerns me, but it's troubling, is that as it was indicated in the staff report, there are no design standards that apply to this. So, you know, we can talk about what it is and what it isn't, but in terms of the meet, the four additional meetings, will those be meetings where architect, civil engineer will be presenting? Or will they be meetings where the neighbors will continue to have input and you guys can essentially go through a design abbreviated, but a design process with them so that in a perfect world, you could almost say that the design standards are being developed with the neighbors as you develop the building?
You described, you described it very well. We'll present, they'll respond, we'll also go out to the site and physically show them where trees will go along, what edge of, because there's a good screen for most of the neighbors, but not a perfect one. And we have trees that we know we can pick up and move at least twenty, and so, we'll fill in the edge. And so, we'll meet onsite, but it's what you described. They'll see it. We've got on the subcommittee, a very talented architect, and so, and we are just committed. And, you know, we've hired Ali Pointer, who we think are top-notch too, and so, we're optimistic.
Okay.
Ultimately, though, Kent, who will decide? Will it be the neighborhood and you folks? Or will it, if we approve it today, then what say-so do they have?
Well, as you know, traditionally, there is no standard for us to bring design in. Sometimes it's been done, but that's more the exception rather than the rule. Well, I think what my goal would be that after four meetings, we will have a landscape plan and elevations and skin drawings that we can show the council, and hopefully, the neighbors are saying that's what we like. If not, they're going to say, you know, we need to do, take this on the drawing, and I don't know what they'll say, but, you know, spruce it up, I guess. And the council can say, you know, that's appropriate or not. But I mean, normally, design is not a formal function of the review process, but we're willing to make it that, realizing though, that as you said, there's no specific design guidelines. You know, we have downtown guidelines, but design standards, and we have older neighborhood standards, but we really don't have any new. So, we'll be working with the neighbors to create it.
When you say sixty percent brick, is, you've committed to that, is that right?
Yes. That's in the condition that's in front of you on all sides that we've got to hit the sixty percent plus mark. And, you know, if, that's, just makes good common sense that we are going to do that, and we're committed.
It's two point eight.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no design standards, but I guess the Knowles right now and the maintenance shed are both brick, so a hundred percent brick, so.
Well, and again, as you'll hear some of the neighbors say, because we're residential healthcare, we've got, you know, memory care assisted, independent, along with programming, and we need to get them all on the first floor or be able to walk on the first floor and connect it. So, it's a big, long building. And so, we've got to break it up. And yes, you could put a barn with all red brick on it, but I think it will be more interesting if we can work with the neighbors to show the architectural relief so that it's not one massive, massive, long wall of just no, no relief other than solid red brick.
Have you put together site views from the perspective of residences so that they could see where the elevations of how it is proposed now?
Mark Hunsaker wisely suggested that at our last meeting, that certain people are actually so high that what they, they'll be looking down on parts of our projects. So, we have not, as far as I know, Mark, done that yet, but we are committed to show different cross-sections so the neighbors can see, because it is hard as citizens, non-experts, to get the three-D effect.
I think there is quite a bit of elevation, and it does go down, so it would be to your advantage to be.
We're in a bowl, and Mark can go over that.
Kathy?
I have one more quick one. So, some of the concerns we've heard relate to losing the green space, obviously. I was just curious, I know you haven't finished your landscape plan, but have you thought about, are there going to be any sort of walking trails or anything? And if so, will they connect to the sidewalk at Old Cheney? So, or is this going to be a fully private trail system if there is one sidewalk system?
You know, my thinking is that'd be more of a private trail system, you know, for our customers to use on their own. Like Kent was saying, our whole first floor will be at elevation twelve forty-seven. And so, that way, because a lot of our customers walking up and down hills or even slight increases are hard. So, whatever trail system we do do, it'll be a definitely fairly flat one and something that hooks up with our common area, which would be right around in this area. So, this would be what I call our clubhouse.
Most of the trees between the residences and the proposed building, are you planning on retaining those or are you removing those?
We're talking about these trees along?
Yeah.
Our goal would be able to keep, and that's why we push the building as far east and north as possible is to retain as many of those trees as possible. And that's where we're getting Mark Palmer from the engineering group to give us specific ideas on how to keep as many of those trees as possible. Because we know it's a very tender subject when you have, I mean, you've had a nice, beautiful green space and a golf course for many years here, and now, all of a sudden, you're putting a fairly large building in there. We understand we need to stay as far away from the homes as possible and keep as many of the trees as possible.
And you intend to keep the existing fairway? That's, or how is that?
The topography of the existing fairway, you know, the fairway is open.
Yeah.
So, we shouldn't mess up too many trees when they're not there to begin with. But the drainage plan that Olson will be providing, that's where the drainage has to go so that we don't back up any water on anybody. So, you'll probably see a topography shift in the fairway, but the tree masses on both sides, the intent is we can get the grade back to where we need to and still get the water to go down the middle of the fairway.
Maya?
On the side of the building that faces the residential neighbors, do you have any idea what the transparency level will be in terms of windows, doors, things of that nature?
Right, you're asking about?
Yeah.
The west side?
Yes.
On the assisted living, we will have windows there, but no, no patios or anything like that. But on the independent living, and that's why we tried to minimize the amount of units that do face to the west, there will be some patios there. Each of our, in independent living, we try to have patios for each of our customers. So, there will be windows and patios on the independent living.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you clarify for me, when you're talking about independent living, you're basically saying apartments for senior individuals?
Our average age customer will probably be right around eighty-three to eighty-four years of age.
So, they still have a full kitchen in those units?
Yes, yeah.
It's not like assisted living where they go and have a joint meal in a common area. They cook for themselves?
Cook for themselves. We have a dining room on the independent living side and where people can have breakfast, lunch, or dinner, whatever they choose. But they will have a full kitchen in their apartments where they can cook for themselves if they choose to.
Do their own laundry?
Yes, yep. Yeah, we'll even have laundry inside the units of, inside the apartments of the assisted living.
Other questions? All right. We'll ask if there's any additional testimony in support of the application?
I'd like to see the topography presentation from Olson. I'd like to see the topography presentation from Olson that Kent.
Oh. Can we, want to come up? Kathy has a question for you.
I just, could you show us the topography presentation? That'd be great.
Absolutely. This was the plan on the, that was included in the staff report. This is one big bowl, basically, and there is a storm sewer line that runs down the middle through the property. It's probably undersized. We'll be looking to relocate that. And here's some, this is, this is the elevations of the property. We're about a twelve thirty-five to twelve sixty-five, thirty-foot of elevation change. So, it's, there's a lot of grade. There's a lot of grade across the side end. We're working with it in a condensed area on the eastern side that makes.
Mark, what's the elevation if you go just the west? No? Yeah, from there, from the building there over to the lot, the residential area?
We're twelve sixty-five here. You're at a twelve fifty elevation on the west side. So, the east side is higher, the west side. The west side's pretty consistent at about a twelve fifty elevation, about all the way along there. You can see twelve forty-five, twelve fifty, twelve forty-seven, twelve forty-eight. It's.
It's twelve fifty there, and then what's the building?
Building first floor elevation is twelve forty-seven. So, we're about equivalent in elevation right here. And just something to equate to, and I'm swapping grading plans around on you here, but this was the original submitted plan. And we did include a couple of cross-sections that showed the grade change. We've got cross-section AA, that is actually down at the southern corner, about the closest point of the old, the old plan. And one of the, one of the concerns had been from the neighbors is flooding or getting water onto their property. And the bottom line is their properties are higher than, than our building through this area, and we're, we're keeping the water. It's, the closest we get is down here, a twelve forty-seven. You're at about a twelve fifty-two or so on the property line. And then, our building stays, and the property line basically stays level. And so, we get the drainage to work. We're consistently at or below the neighboring property owner's elevations.
What about in that front section, the proposed three-story section?
And I'll swap around to the, elevation of the road is about a twelve thirty-three. There's actually a depression, and that's one of, been one of the concerns that we are actually filling. And just a little explanation on this building. We talked about the building dropping, and this first phase of the independent living will have a basement garage, so it's got a fourth story underground. And that, that elevation is a twelve thirty-five. It's twelve foot lower. We stepped down to this north section, this north building. We're actually ending the garage and making those, that lowest level housing. And so, it's not a parking garage. And so, you go three stories up from that, and you're actually a roof line below this building here. But we still, this area is lower. It's lower than Old Cheney Road today. We do need to fill that to get to that twelve thirty-five. And that will be our detention cells. We do need to handle, there is the pipe that runs through here. There is some, there is significant drainage. We need to account for that. We need to hold up our water and account for the flows that are coming through this property and, and let it make it all get to this low point and out and head northward.
So, the water will be draining north towards Old Cheney?
Yes. This area goes, this drains down. It runs through a culvert across Old Cheney Road and heads to the north. And we, we are obligated for the design standards to not discharge any more water than, than existing today. And so, we'll be dealing with that as well as dealing with just the, just the amount of water that actually runs into this property on the south end.
Other questions? Thank you. Great. Further testimony in support of the application? All right, we'll turn to testimony and opposition. And again, please come forward, state your name and address. The timer goes off after four minutes. That gives you one minute to wrap up your testimony.
Madam Chair, I'm a member of the Planning Commission. I'm Mark Hunsaker, and I'm appearing on behalf of a group of neighbors from the Knowles and Rolling Hills, some of whom abut this property, some of whom are simply in the neighborhood, but have an interest in this project. The original site plan and, and overall plan for the, for the project was too dense. The buildings were too tall. They were too close to the abutting properties, and, and way too many trees on the golf course were being destroyed. Simply, it was unacceptable. But the most recent site plan represents a significant improvement. The setbacks from the abutting properties are larger, and we've been promised that the buildings will be less than fifty-five feet tall. There are still some in our group who are, who are very much opposed to the proposed density regardless of the improvements to the site plan, and you're likely to hear some of that today, although I promise you that we will be as brief as possible. There is some substantial basis in the zoning ordinance and historic treatment of applications of this type to question the application and the density being sought. This application does request two different uses under our zoning ordinance, elderly and retirement housing and residential healthcare. Elderly and residential, excuse me, elderly and retirement housing is defined as a residential development that incorporates specific features designed to alleviate access problems commonly experienced by the elderly and in which at least one occupant in each unit is more than sixty years of age. The residential healthcare facility is one in which a structural. The residential health care facility is one in which a structure used in a residential nature licensed or approved by the state or an appropriate agency and could include things such as assisted living, nursing care, convalescent home, hospice home, et cetera. So we're talking about two different uses, they're both, they're in two different use groups in our ordinance, but there is only one application for one type of permit here and that's inconsistent with the way these types of applications have been approved in the past. Ordinarily, these projects have incorporated both of those sections into the special permits. The staff report has, provides no condition, for example, with respect to occupancy of the independent living units being sixty, aged sixty or above. There's no analysis of the two uses, no explanation of the density computation that was done to reach a conclusion that up to two hundred and eighty-five people, now less than that, I understand, are allowable under the single permit, much less how to convert that into the unit calculation that's necessary for the elderly and retirement housing. Virtually every one of the recent applications that have this type of project have both app, have both of those sections referenced in the permit resolutions. That includes Savannah Pines, Legacy, the Landing, and on and on. With respect to height, moreover, the, the only time that height has been waived for one of these types of projects has been when the project itself is located within a PUD, the Landing and Savannah Pines. And never has the height been waived when there hasn't been a building elevation literally attached to the permit. And more recently, there have been a number of them where building elevations have been attached that were not height waivers. For example, the memory care unit at Twenty-Fifth and Old Cheney. Now, we believe that Dial has negotiated with us in good faith and we believe we've negotiated in good faith, but we are at the point here where there's been sufficient, insufficient time for us to reach a complete agreement on these issues. Moreover, the staff and the law department are objecting to some provisions of the, the amendments that were originally offered up by the developer. And we're now faced with a choice of agreeing to continue that process without any assurance of backup from the planning department in the event of an impasse or outright opposing the project, which we really are not inclined to do. We don't like those choices and we suggest to you that a better course would be to place this item on your pending list for action in two weeks, when you would have more than just a concept to approve and hopefully a, a project that could be agreed upon by everybody concerned or at least most people who are directly concerned. You're asked to approve a rezoning and a site plan that you saw just today, an unprecedented height waiver and a project with no visual representation for you to review at all. We think that those, that in addition to the fact that there are no conditions with respect to the reduced parking ratios or with respect to the occupancy of the independent living indicate that it's maybe not quite ready for your stamp of approval and a couple of weeks delay would be well worth it. In addition to that, because of the Independence Day holiday, the delay of two weeks at this level really only results in a one-week delay at the city council level and we, we're aware, of course, of contractual provisions for closings and so forth, but at least in my experience, those kinds of things are easily worked out. So that's what we'd ask you to do today and I think it's, I think you'll agree that when you look at what you have in front of you, there really isn't much for you to really grasp in terms of what you're approving.
Mark, I'm looking at the letter that outlines when your next meetings are scheduled and it says June thirtieth, July seventh, July thirteenth, and July fifteenth. Is a two-week deferral going to be then enough to get through all of those meetings?
I really think that it would be enough to get us close enough that we could be moving on to the council at that point. I, I don't, I know that there are meetings scheduled after your next meeting, but to the extent, I mean, those, we did that with the thought in mind that we were really, hopefully going to have the things done prior to that last meeting on each of those items.
Question, other questions for Mr. Hunsicker?
Could you go over, again, just the main issues that you're hoping to solve in those two weeks?
Well, we, we want to be sure that we're clear on, we, we want to continue to discuss the, the, the density of the project and number of units. We may or may not reach a point where we, we may not get what we want, of course, that we, we, we agree that there has been some step in the right direction, a reduction of ten, by ten percent, but when you consider the numbers of units that are proposed here compared with any other kind of, of project that could be done, they're substantial. I mean, they, they, there really is a, a huge increase in the number of units. And again, I, I also understand, I've been involved in these on the other side, I understand that these projects do not generate the same amount of traffic as a, just an ordinary apartment complex. But I think the independent living in particular does imply a certain amount of normal activity and that's why in the ordinance that I passed out to you, it has a different parking requirement than the, than the healthcare facility. It can also be, be waived and, and again, we're not, we're not here to pick at little things, but to suggest to you that there's more to this than, than the staff report seems to indicate there might be and that we, we want to work with, with the developer on, on the density, on the height, on the drainage plan, on the landscape plan, and especially on the rendering of the, of the appearance of the building because we think among, among those things that are important, that's right up there as being very important.
So in terms of the density, is the majority of the group that you represent opposed to the zone change or is there, is there a middle ground there?
I would not, I would not, I think there's middle ground there. I mean, what, what we have proposed to the developer, which we've not had, hell no yet, on, is a, is a reduction of, of an additional twenty units, which really, at least by the ratios that have been presented in the, in the application and, and the revised site plan, would indicate that it kind of splits between R1 and R2. And again, we, we may or may, we may have some additional discussion of that, we may get there, we may not get there, but we think that it's important to have a little bit of time to do that.
Mark, and just, just to clarify what's still on the table as far as your group is concerned, the motion to amend reduces the number of persons from two eighty-five to two fifty-eight. You're still saying you would like fewer people?
Yeah, I mean-
Okay.
That was a, I mean, that is a result of the last meeting we had and that was, that, to be, you know, candid, that came from the developer and, and I thought that was a, a really good step toward hopefully getting things moving in the right direction.
And there's also a reduction of fifty-five feet to forty-five feet in height limitations and you're still looking for more reduction there?
You know, I'm not sure that we necessarily need a lot more, I, the, the number that we've heard is forty-two, forty-five is maybe not a big deal, but there's no condition in the report that you're looking at that talks about height. It just doesn't exist. I mean, there are a number of those kinds of things which are not reflected in your report, even though they are reflected in the, in the letter. They're, they're not in the conditions of approval.
But they're in the applicant's motion to amend the conditions of approval?
I did not see anything about height in the, in the-
Is that in the first paragraph?
Sorry?
In the, right under conditions of approval before you get to cite specific conditions?
Oh, I'm sorry. It is in that general paragraph, you're right, I'm sorry.
And then the neighborhood also wants approval of the landscaping and the building skin?
Absolutely.
All right.
And again, part of that is, I think, an important aspect of, of your overall approval of the height waiver.
Thank you. Further testimony in opposition to the application?
Hello, my name is Sue Gardner, I live at sixty-two twenty-nine Barbara Lane in the neighborhood. My property is not abut this proposed development, but I've been following the developments of, you know, the neighborhood getting together and all the concerns that they have, I have. I, I differ a little bit from what Mr. Hunsicker was saying and that's one reason I want to testify. He doesn't represent me directly, though I do appreciate his comments and Ms. Ikorn's comments, I think, really summed up what I've been hearing and what I wrote myself to your council here. I personally am against the zoning change, I think that it's a poor use of this area, the proposed development, I'm against the special permit being approved. I noticed in your note, in your agenda, that the twenty-forty future land use map shows that this property is green space and open space and I'm one of those people who would really love to see it remain that, though I realize that there are limitations in what will happen, may happen. I wanted to just read through some notes about the aesthetics considerations, there are covenants, as you mentioned, so there are no design standards for this area, but if you go there, you can see that there's a sort of cultural norm about what you'll see if you visit the neighborhood. So there's brick, like you've heard many times, there's, all the properties are set back from the street, the landscaping is absolutely lovely, there are developed trees there, there are a few front fences and the height proposed is really alarming to me. Even at forty-two feet, it's just way out of scale with everything else in that neighborhood. These are ranch homes there, they're large homes and I, I just, I don't know, I think the Knowles is an iconic neighborhood if, if you're from Lincoln. If you drive by there, if you went there swimming as a kid, it's just, if you look at an aerial photograph of Lincoln, it's just, it's a special place and I just don't see that this development is in the character of how it was envisioned by residents in nineteen fifty-five. I don't see that it's inconsistent with what was written in nineteen seventy-nine and so on in planning documents and, and everything else. And I look around the neighborhood and I see Southwest High School and there's so much open area there and very few mature trees and it's not landscaped. There's lots of room for development in Southwest Lincoln. I think about the Landing, it's, I can walk to the Landing from my house on Barbara Lane, it's not that far away. I feel like we already have a facility in our area generally that serves in the same way that this development would do. So I don't see that as a compelling reason to put this property there. I was just in Geneva, Switzerland, I got back late last night, it's a lovely city, there are green spaces everywhere you look and how they develop there is in the character of the buildings of the ages. So there might be a modern building, but it has the character of the older ones and it's very pleasant to walk through and you feel safe and you don't feel like all of a sudden there's a building that doesn't belong, you know, when you go there. And I think about our neighbor Omaha and I'm not sure that Omaha is, I don't know if, you know, the planning decisions there, how that all works, but I don't think they're developing in a way that makes Omaha a lovely city and I think Lincoln is a lovely city. I think of it as a garden city and I love my neighborhood and I love going there, we moved there five years ago and we moved there because it's just so nice. So I think that's all I need to say and I, I oppose both of the things that are up today. Thank you.
Thank you. Further testimony in opposition?
I'm Dan Marvin, I'm at fifty-nine eighteen Rolling Hills Boulevard and I abut this project. I'm here primarily to speak in opposition to the, the staff report that you got on June tenth. I think the amendments and some of the changes have gone, have gone a long way to make this a project that, you know, that I think is far better than what staff approved. And, you know, staff was up here just a few minutes ago and I always took zoning changes as something that's very serious, you know, special permits or a lower threshold, but I think a zoning change is a philosophically something that you have to really take very seriously. It's what neighbors invested in, it's what they saw when they looked out their property and when you change those rules of the game, I think you have to have a very good reason for that. And the explanation we had just a few minutes ago was the developer came in, they looked at the property, they couldn't make enough money on it with the number of units that R1 would allow, so we decided we would change the zone. I think it takes something that should be a little bit more seriously addressed than just that level. The other thing that I've heard is that you all and the city council and the mayor have pushed for more density within the community. We need a more dense community and we're just going to have to all accept it, the city needs to become denser. I haven't voted on the recent twenty-forty comp plan, but I will read a section out of it that addresses the issue of density in existing neighborhoods. It says, "The city's primary strategy for residential infill and redevelopment outside the greater downtown is to encourage the redevelopment and reuse of sites and buildings in commercial areas in order to create new and mixed-use centers that are compatible and complementary to adjacent neighborhoods. One thousand well-designed and appropriately placed dwelling units are projected for neighborhoods in the existing city." They put a number on it, one thousand. We were originally proposed two hundred and ten, the other side of the Knowles has yet to be developed. I mean, it's conceivable that four hundred of the projected twenty-forty new residential units would all be absorbed in this one little square mile in Lincoln. So in terms of sharing the burden of a community-wide goal of increased density, I would suggest the Knowles is certainly doing its part to, or the Knowles neighborhood is doing its part to absorb the density that you all have said is supposed to be done, but the question is how much? How, how do you share that? And that's why we have pushed to ask the developer to reduce the amounts, amount of density because, you know, it shouldn't, all the density in the city for expansion shouldn't just be eyed as this one area and I believe the planning department has also relied on the comprehensive plan to increase density and they see this as quote-unquote "opportunities for increased density." But you've got to measure that, how much is that? How much additional density do you have to do? Our four items were always, they were always density, they were height, landscaping, and design. What the developer has worked with us is to address all four of those issues in terms of density, height, landscaping, and design, but it seems unfortunate that, that neighborhoods have to go out and hire attorneys and then get into a whole commotion because the department doesn't want to address those issues on their own, it's forced the neighbors to have to deal with that. I think we've got a much improved project over what was originally approved and I'll stop there and take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Marvin?
Dan, I guess Mark proposed that a two-week deferral, I'm kind of inclined at this point that might make sense, but what's your opinion? Can, is two weeks, is that going to make it work?
Well, I think that-
For you?
Yeah, I think, I think that would work for me. Our goal here all along was to create a process so that we don't hold the developer up so that they can go ahead with their business, but that we have some say-so in terms of the design and the landscaping and they were good enough to work out a process with that and I think- And I think that, you know, I think that we can, we were always assuming that there is a second issue that's gonna be reviewed before the city council and many of these issues would get resolved by the time the city council hears them.
Cause it, if I'm inclined to do something like that, then I could put the onus on you folks to work it out, you know, to, to make sure it gets done.
Right. Obviously, the neighborhood has had to step up and work out an issue that did not get addressed by the department.
What density do you think is appropriate?
You know, I think that's tough, I think that's tough. There's a, you know, when I met George, George Bisalis when this project was coming up, I said, I thought if you're gonna change the zone, which I think in all likelihood, you know, I'm somewhat of a realist and I know a lot of people don't like me to accept the fact that a zone's gonna get changed, I would accept that. I think that three people weigh in on the zone change, though. The neighbors, the community, and the developer. And the only person that was at the party that we heard from was the developer. I think the neighbors who have a vested, invested interest that abuts this property clearly have a vested interest. And if you have, you know, the example I gave with George, cause Huddle had just come out, I said if Huddle wanted to come into town and put their big iconic building up, there'd be a community benefit here. I don't think you have, some people might say a healthcare facility or an apartment for the elderly is, you know, a compelling community interest. I don't think it really is. My grandmother lived in an apartment until she was 90, you know? Apartment living is available. You all just had a, a project from, from Edgemont or Eastmont Towers. So, these things go up. I don't know that it's quite to the level that like a Huddle would have or a, an Assurity Building or something like that. So, absent a community, I think that this has to be something that has to be worked out somewhat between the neighbors and the developer. And I don't have a, a number. I was happy to see the developer drop their buildings down, lower in profile to three stories, that really helped considerably from something that was going to be quite tall.
Thank you. Other questions?
Okay.
All right. I think we're gonna take a five-minute break before we continue with testimony, so we are adjourned for five minutes.